I'd like to call the village for meeting on Monday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four to four, and it is six P M. Uh, we will begin with roll call. Trustee Booker, here. Trustee Woods, here.
Trustee Horns, yeah.
Trustee Johnson, here.
Trustee Thompson, here.
President Montgomery, here. And President Reed, he was not president, but Trustee Reed, have their excuse. So, next we will, uh, you are present.
Our pledge is just to define of the United States of America. To the public or which stands on each strength and their power, in this world, we are taking and us as well.
Are there any persons here?
There is not present.
Okay, um, the next item on our agenda is, um, collect official and staff reports, and those are in our minutes. This is one. I didn't put it in my report, because I think I may have got it. I submitted my report, but I want to commend the staff. On the beautiful new Brown Deer magazine, I think this, is it the third?
Second.
Second edition. Uh, with the new company, just the quality, articles, the layout, the paper, and citizens know the difference. So, kudos. Keep up the good work, and if I can keep up the right, you know, be good. Um, any questions about? Any, uh, the, um, staff reports, just for the audience?
Just have one, and I wrote down my case, but it was in regards to the meeting, don't you guys have the realtors? I'm just curious, uh, you know, with the change in the law, everything where, uh, there's different agreements and things now that the buyers have to sign an, uh, an agreement, nowhere to go, do policies for that, and then the buyers can actually, or the sellers can actually, uh, negotiate the, you know, the price and that, or the commission. Um, is there, and anything that I noticed, like on, on North, on Sixty Street North, or Brown Deer, and then, uh, um, Woodland, there are a number of columns that sell now, you know, which is kind of unusual, more than than normal. So, I don't know.
Yeah, that, you know, Tyler and I were in that meeting, that wasn't a part of the discussion. Uh, but in terms of houses going up for sale, um, I think average, let's say average, the some months it may be six, some months it may be thirteen or fourteen ounces. So, how people, or when they determine when they're gonna list, you have to know.
Yeah, I understand, but it was just kind of coincident, because, you know, you had the meeting, and you're talking about things that, you know, Brown Deer, and that, so I just wanted, you know.
Yeah, I, I, to summarize, the main discussion more involved, uh, them, uh, just talking about their organization as a whole. Uh, they're trying to get the board of directors more involved, and speaking with their home communities, which someone from Brown Deer is on the or heard, uh, so that was one of the main reasons they had reached out. Uh, they wanted to get to know what's happening in the community, what, uh, potential development is occurring in the community. Uh, so I gave them very broad, or President Montgomery and I gave a broad summary on that. Um, you know, they're really trying to push any new developments to have some kind of for-sale product. I think they're seeing, you know, a lot of apartments or for rent products go in the Milwaukee area. And obviously, where the Realtor group for-sale product helps them out, so there was a lot of discussion about that, but they also just talked about how the market has been, um, increasing so drastically for homeowners, uh, which has also been impacting good and bad their market, so those are kind of some of the general conversations that came on with it. Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
Trustee. I know with Matthew, uh, and this is on the side note, how do we report upon this team? Um, a phone call or an email, or there's the report, uh, probably on the website, okay, and this time, okay, thank you.
Any other questions, but time limits. If not, uh, we will move to our consent agenda. And under our consent agenda, we have the minutes from Office Fifth. We have, uh, approval of a job description for public health nurse supervisor, and the twenty twenty-four salary range claim amendment, to add to public health nurse supervisor, accept the twenty twenty-four quarter-two financial report. Approval, consider approval of the contract for the twenty twenty-four roadway repaving program, the start payment, uh, fourth. E, consider approval of contract award for sanitary sewer, cured in-place pipelining. Subject to visa sewer, D O C. And F, consider approval of the contract award for the Gunners Woods Carmichael Lane Thorne Sewer and Reditching Project to Property Solutions Contracting Corp. That's a lot of, uh, consent agenda, and most of them are with Matthew. Uh, I think that's the one, two, three, or three. Three, and then the, uh, sort of, are there any questions? Um, Trustee Booker, and then Trustee Horns.
So, I'd like to discuss, uh, item C, second quarter financial report, possibly, you don't know. Very just might, yeah. Uh, I saw the second quarter, but it definitely tell me, are we on track? Uh, you know, you know, because I know a lot of things come through earlier in the year, and funding payments difference. But I just, I just want to know from a forecasting perspective for the rest of the year, where we are.
I can, I can give that thirty-second summary, uh, expenses, yeah, when we went through all the departments are on par. Uh, there's not really an expense line that Derek or I are very concerned about. Um, so a lot of that is on track. On the revenue side, um, uh, in general, we're looking good. Hotel tax revenue is still a little, uh, difficult to forecast, it might be a little bit under our projection, but investment income is much higher than projected. We're gonna see that about two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what was projected as the first two quarters was really good for that line item. So, overall, we're feeling good about the year. We're on a good projection or trend line, yeah.
Six, maybe? Trustee?
I was just gonna say, item D, E, and F went before the, uh, public works and reputation, uh, meeting, and if there were questions, I would ask them, anything else, and okay, and we got the minutes, we can talk.
And just a note for the board, you know, Matthew and I were talking about this a little bit, the reason why those items are on the consent agenda, uh, those were in the budget and the C I P, um, and came well under budget, so a- as long as those things match, you know, we'll typically move those to the consent agenda, but just know as a board, if you ever want to pull those items for further discussion, you're more than welcome to. Um, so it just wanted to include the rationale why those were included on consent.
And I'm trying to think, in terms of the repaving, do we usually use Nolan, I mean Dolan?
Panadol, yeah. So, Panadol was, uh, one of the bidders, there, there was a, a, a mistake, I did, put in the, the, we had three bidders, it was Stark, Wolf, and if you look back at night, inadvertently, I had put Stark again, that last one should have been Panadol. Uh, Panadol this year was high, um, Stark obviously low, uh, but they were all extremely tight, uh, that's good to see. Yep, Stark I think we had last in twenty twenty-one.
All right, any other questions? If not, do we, um, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Trustee Thompson and second by Trustee Woods to approve consent agenda, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Eyes have multi-carried unanimously. The next item is a presentation by Human Relations Committee, accomplishments, and future goal, and who will be doing that presentation? Hey, how about that? All right.
Would you like me to go down front or go from here?
What would you like to do?
I prefer to sit right here. Basically, the Human Relations Committee is a dedicated group that includes one village trustee, uh, an appointed, an appointee from the school district, and then five community members. We meet once a month right now on the third Wednesday. Uh, our mission statement is, the purpose of the Human Relations Committee is to advocate for and promote an inclusive, divisive, excuse me, diverse community where all residents feel respected, safe, and welcome. Um, so what we're looking at is, uh, ways to be inclusive and diverse, where we, uh, make sure that everybody has the rights and values of the community, the protection of human and civil rights, that we listen to community comments related to discrimination, harassment, vandalism, involving hate crimes, and intimidation and reviews of internal public organizational processes, procedures, and facilities, make recommendations for improvement. We're, uh, first year, uh, committee, this is the first year we've been operating. And so, we set ourselves a few goals. Uh, if you want to look in your packet that you have it, there's the whole thing about what our goals are. Um, the first one we made is a welcome packet for new residents, and it has information on Brown Deer, the garbage and recycling information, the school information, a welcome card, and then a coupon for a local restaurant. And we are going to make sure those get handed out to everybody. We have Wanda doing it right now, but Wanda goes out and says hello to all the new residents. Our committee will, yeah, excuse me, new residents.
No, homeowners, yeah.
Which the committee will take over. And she's been doing a good job, we're now gonna take over, we're gonna do it. We're also going to go out, we got a list of all the apartment complexes, and we're going to go out to all of them and talk with their management about including our packet with the, uh, paperwork they give new residents when they move in. That way, we've gotten both the people who are buying and the people who rent. And over the course of the next couple of months, we'll go out, like I said, and talk to all the different, uh, apartment complexes, and see what we can do about that. Then we have, uh, other goals to make sure that we have, like, opportunities to connect with other volunteer committees having a need and breathing. Our goal is to make sure people know we're there, that they have questions and problems, they can come and see us. Find out what else the, you know, people want, uh, we did put it in the, uh, the last questionnaire that went out to villages, to the villages, and about half the responses were, we don't need a committee. But I think that's to make it clear, we were going to do something other than what we were. Um, so that's what we're doing. Any questions?
When you say, we're gonna take it over and do, or do it, do it, the homeowners, who is that specifically?
Well, for sure, me. Um, we've, we've talked about it among, maybe, we're gonna divide it up either by month, so that there's a different group going out every month, or we're gonna divide it up by areas of the village, so that, you know, the one person isn't trying to do everything every month.
And just to piggyback off that, Trustee Woods, I think there's been some discussion too about trying to recruit people, um, like as ambassadors, that if you as a committee need a little bit more assistance with that, and there's people in the community that want to help with that, that you would have kind of a list of people that could also help in that effort too. Um, I think a, a, a note to that is, you know, you know, being a part of a, you know, inclusive community, it's not just the village or a committee's role, it's all of our roles in order to welcome our neighbors, so that's where if we have people in the, the community who are also willing to participate in such a, a program like that, I think there would be some good merit to kind of having a volunteer list to see if anyone else would mind participating.
One of the goals we have is to encourage neighbors to know neighbors. There have been, even on the committee, we were talking, and a lot of people don't know all their neighbors. Uh, I'm lucky on our street, we have a lot of neighbors who talk, so, which is good, because there's crime and stigia out there. They, uh, so, yeah, we've talked to a lot of our neighbors, we, we see them when they're walking, we stop and talk to people. Uh, we think we've got a good handle in our neighborhood, we also have, every summer, we have a block party, so to speak, uh, at one of the neighbor's houses, and you get a chance to just talk to people and get to know everybody. So, you know, that's kind of one of those things we want to kind of push, that neighbors will get to know neighbors, because the more you know of your neighbors, the better, better feeling everybody has.
Trustee Johnson?
You have a question related to the big outreach, can giveaways are, is there a budget that you working with? Or to put these products together, or there are some, some of the goals, you have about ten goals laid out.
The, the, the main packet, which is like right out there.
Yeah, because we want it goes out to, to, or if you have.
Yeah.
Do that.
Oh.
These, these are, are done right now by
the village?
Yeah. Like Karen does for us, because Karen is the lucky person who takes, you know, takes our minutes and things. So, I mean, what, what this is so far is, there's no, there's no real budget for us. So, we're trying to make sure that, first off, we get started, use just the resources that you have on hand that are miscellaneous things, starting, and then we'll ramp it up and see if we need to actually come back and ask for money for specific purposes.
Yeah, I think another item that you can probably, in the package, is magazine, when you go out, uh, who's a interviewer who's moving in for the first time, probably would have not seen it or received one. But maybe that's something you can add in, that should be.
And that, I think that's gonna depend on how many extras we have.
Yeah, but we do have electronic copies of it, where maybe if we put a Q R code or something to it, the, the recent version, uh, that might be a way that we can get around that.
And I can tell you from a, from a budgetary standpoint, before this transition, I would go to the dollar door for a couple of years and just bought, I said it'd be, what, two, four dollars? And I did that for almost a year, and then after that, one of the residents said, hey, you should do something a little more classy. And I thought, what is that? So, she being, uh, Walgreens, the, uh, older, older pictures. And my picture was on there, because I was actually writing on each, but this way eliminated that, which ended up being cheaper. You get the photocopy, and they came with envelopes. Um, I mean, over the last three years, I probably spent maybe two hundred dollars, amount of money to do that. Uh, but the village has been doing these in-house, so whatever the printing cost is, and they don't take anything, you know, like a basket, but more information. At least nothing now, unless somebody in the village says, hey, we want to do a basket for you, that could be pretty expensive. So, other questions for, uh, the Human Relations Committee? Just know that you can volunteer too. If you see a house go up in your neighborhood, and it's not pretty for you to go and introduce yourself as an ambassador, but you gotta do something.
I just wanted to thank Karen for, I want to thank the committee, but I want to thank Karen too as a staff liaison, that was one of the things that, when I mentioned it to staff that opportunity, Karen jumped on that, and really thankful for her efforts taking on a committee with a new mission, and then I think she's done a great job, so I just wanted to give Karen some, a little kudos.
Thank you, and I missed it. But I was, yeah.
Be a volunteer.
Be a volunteer. Yes. And, uh, the, the other extent, if you don't, if it's further from your house, you're an ambassador, it's close, so it's any good law. But, so, I'm all over that, so whatever the gas is, it will sucken out of the dish, so, that's it.
I can live myself a little bit, but, I mean.
There you go. One time, okay? And about, you said the house is on Woodland, is that what you said?
No, it's a Woodland apartment.
That's you.
Is that where you live?
Yeah.
Oh.
Okay, but it is a good connection right here. All right, thanks again. So, we will move to our new business. First item is, uh, approval of the state municipal financial agreement for the Green Bay Road. Uh, we have project from Fairlane to North Landville. And you got Fairlane, I think.
Yep, so that's down in, uh, it starts with Landale, so this project, um, just over the Good Hope, I mean, actually, Fairlane and Good Hope. And this is a twenty twenty-nine D O T project. Um, it does have an advanceable date to twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight, depending on D O T funding, but right now it's slotted in for twenty twenty-nine. So, they've begun the planning process for this. Um, well, six months ago, we have a little officials meeting, the president, and that, all just to hit off the project, he's playing, um, it's going to, going to River Hills, and it's coming here. And so, we'll be starting where the roundabout project, um, finished, so where that pavement line is, and then that goes all the way south, uh, to, to Fairlane. So, Landale is putting in a, a lot of sidewalk on their portion, and in Brown Deer, we are opposing, um, connecting with the sidewalk right now. That ends, just kind of ends in no man's land, in Cedar Grove. So, that way, that whole neighborhood right now, they may have some walkability, um, up to the Oak Leaf Trail, like that, or original village, and then elsewhere where the sidewalk is. So, I think it's a good connection piece, we didn't look at taking it all the way down to Bradley, but, um, because there aren't really any other side roads other than Cedar Grove neighborhood, we thought save some dollars that have logical stopping point, called SWIP. Um, so our portion right now is estimated at twenty-two thousand, we also have about five thousand dollars from some utility adjustments, it's like manhole adjustments are bounced from the project. And so, we are just looking for, um, approval to enter this agreement with the state, and then that way the sidewalk will be included as part of.
It's still, you said our, our, what is it? Eighty?
Twenty-two thousand.
Okay, so, oh, okay, sidewalk, so our municipal, okay, and then the fair is eighty-eight.
Correct.
Total cost of a hundred and ten.
That's correct.
So, we have twenty percent plus the not participating.
Yeah, the non-participating, and that's just like the utility adjustments, uh, that, on village services.
And we're approving this now for twenty twenty-five.
Correct.
So, it's not in our current, but it wouldn't be until.
It would be in next, you see in next year's C I P, the commitment.
Okay, and next year's twenty twenty-five, we gotta do it better?
Yeah, to, yeah, they want it better, yeah, um, and worst case scenario, this dollar will come out and go plug to, uh, that project is six hundred thousand, so you can just take some out there, if the project was advanced, but you include this in the C I P next year.
And are these, is this amount locked in where it could be done, or could it go up?
No, this is, uh, it wanted, these are not to exceed.
Okay. Questions? If there are no questions, is there a motion?
Move approve the state municipal financial agreement, that's the one I debate. North Green Bay Road, Route Seven, Reconstruction Project, A private ID number, twenty-five sixty-five dash zero three, dash O three, dash.
Is there a second?
What second?
It's been moved by, uh, Trustee Horns, the second by, Trustee Thompson, to approve the state municipal financial agreement stated in, uh, the motion, all those in favor?
Uh, I don't.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. The next item is, consider approval of the state municipal maintenance agreement, with the Green Bay, this is the same thing.
Yeah, thank you. So, now that we've committed to spending money to build the sidewalk, uh, the state also asks that after it's in, that we will maintain said sidewalk with all spiritual village, uh, and so this is just entered into that maintenance agreement.
All right, um, any questions?
Yeah, is that sidewalk asphalt, or is it concrete?
Concrete. And there's no financial commitment, it's just, it would come, become a part of the routine.
Exactly. This is what we've got our operations, it's, we're contracted, or something, we have to fix it, and, awesome.
Other questions? If not, we would need a motion to approve for that.
I'll make the motion. I move we approve the state municipal maintenance agreement for the North Green Bay Road, State Highway Fifty-Six construction project, ID number two five six five dash zero three dash zero three slash seven three.
Um, it's, the move, is there a second?
I second.
Been moved by Trustee Woods, and second by, uh, Trustee Booker, to approve the state municipal maintenance agreement for Green Bay slash, Green Bay Road and Reconstruction, Fifty-Six Green Construction Project. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? I accept motion carries, thank you. Item C, consider approval of professional survey and industrial engineering services contract with Sigma, who could the village's, uh, employee and public and police department green infrastructure parking lot project utilizing M M S B G I funding. Project utilizing MMSD G I funding.
I'm assuming this is you two that just is this. Um, so the, we, the village has allocated money from MMSD to be used for green infrastructure projects. And one of those is um, permeable pavement or. And the asphalt. Are we tensioning anything to do with stormwater quality? This also helps us, uh, you guys hear me in. March, talk about our stormwater permit that we will be in our, um, and we're. It's our TMDL goals. And so a project like this helps the village meet stormwater goals. So what we're proposing to do is uh, redo the village hall parking lot. It's in need of asphalt pavement replacement. If you've gone in the back. Uh, employee, employees can attest to this, it is in very rough shape uh, in the back part of the lot.
This was one of the first things that were first told me when I started. It was a large, large desire from employees for that lot to be done.
Exactly. Um, and then we also will get repeating the uh, front parking lot as well.
All of it.
Yeah, so bird touches the pond.
Mm-hmm.
That is relatively new and fine and that actually already has permeable asphalt in it. Sometimes if you look, there's in the drywall, there's the asphalt, it's like a different color. And that is already infiltration of stormwater. So we'd like to take this MMSD uh, money that, that we have and use this for our parking lot reconstruction. The best example that I can give um, is the library parking lot. We'd like to replicate that design. We're here and that was also funded uh, three years ago with MMSD infrastructure dollars. We'd like to just match that same design and privately pave village.
Without the deal.
Yes.
Questions? Comment?
I just want to explain a little bit of how MMSD. Of the great dollars allocated.
Sure, so all of us in the MMSD service area, you pay taxes to MMSD. Okay, and then they pay um, some dollars from there and then we allocate that back to the communities based off of the people that is family. And then uh, they also do this with the PPII program, that's like the sanitary sewer lateral uh, replacement program. And then uh, with the green infrastructure money. So it's, it's the pot that, that's sitting there. Um, you have like about five years to spend it, um, and it builds every year. So around here, we typically get between fifty and sixty thousand dollars annually. And I like to let that build, um, so that we can do a worthwhile.
And this is going on in that field? Yes, yep, so we're getting. You want Karen? M A T C, the school district, MMSD. So we're paying for it. Just indirect, correct? Questions? In terms of, when do you think you'd be looking at this project that?
I think we would do this in twenty twenty five. This would be next year. Well, they kind of, so this is step one, just to get us into the design. Um, first they'll come on the survey. The site and start getting the design order. So let's kind of see how that goes, but that's really when the schedule will get developed. But I wouldn't really see reasons why we wouldn't be doing this in twenty twenty five. Worst case scenario, twenty twenty six, but probably twenty twenty.
And do you know about how long would it take to do?
Yeah, this would just be a couple of month project. I think we'd have to do it in halves. That might slow down a little bit, like you'll go back parking lot to completion. And then switch, you know, and then even out front here, we'll like to build that in halves too, so that people can park, right, using the village hall. We'll build one section of it to completion and then swap.
Okay. Uh, questions? If not, uh, do we get a motion?
People service kind of the sixth group for the village hall, employee and public. And police department, green infrastructure department project utilizing MMSD we have.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Thompson and seconded by trustee Owens to approve the professional survey and civil engineering services contract. Uh, the Sigm, Sigmund group has stated in the motion. Um, all those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? I accept a motion here, thank you. The next item D is uh. Consider approval of construction services agreement with Bybacker. That's right.
Yeah, pretty close, beer, beer vendor.
Beerbacker for the West County Line Road reconstruction project for railroad tracks on North Cedar Brook. Road and Green Bay Road fifty seven and MOU amendment split fifty fifty with Metquar.
All right, so I think this was, the comment was made at public works committee, we, they heard this, both this project enough. Uh, this was just kind of our last piece of the puzzle here. So um. Couple of months ago, we approved the construction contract with Auto Ways Construction. They are getting started this week on Wednesday. There's been a message board signs up for a week and a half now. Alerting that construction is coming. We did hold um, before the last board meeting, a public information round with all the residents up there as well. Um, kind of work over some of the construction details and timeline. Um, and so as part of this project, you also have to do the construction stating. Uh, that's the layout work for the contractor. And so I always like to do this at a separate agreement with the engineering firm because. You do it during the design phase, it'll release know what they're designing yet. And so we like to do it afterwards. And also after we have a contractor onboarded, so that they can. Ask um, what type of layout they need or how much. So if you're ready, it was a price for splitting it right down the middle with Metquar. They found this at their council meeting already. And so it's just coming on overall project one. We're way under budget on this. And so the layout was uh, below. Or getting the project underway. And uh, their, their schedule says they'll be done by the end of October.
Any questions? Trustee Johnson.
You mentioned that we're way under budget?
Yeah, we're, 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 we're under budget, yeah. So we have a balance on this one hundred and sixty two thousand, seven hundred and thirty nine dollars. Now, anything can happen during construction, you know, there can be unknowns or a change order. Uh, what would happen with those dollars is that would just go back into the fund balance, um, never really goes on balance.
Other questions? The answer is a B. Is there a motion? To approve?
I don't see any bias that went to me, but I. Uh, I move we approve the construction services for what?
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Owens and seconded by trustee Thompson for approval of construction services. Agreement for West County Line Road reconstruction. All those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? I accept a motion here. Thank you and thank you. I know you, you don't have control over being under budget, but that's still managed.
Yeah.
We can get money back. Uh, the next item we have on our agenda is approval of Resolution twenty four eleven. A resolution operating the redemption of the taxable note anticipation note stated November one, two thousand twenty three. Is this you?
Yes, um, so this is back to the loan agreement with F Street for the housing project. Um, we gave them a loan and they're wanting to pay the loan back. So everything is working how we have set it up. So anytime, anytime we pay off debt earlier than anticipated or scheduled. The resolution is recommended to adopt just to uh. Confirm the action. So it's a resolution in front of you to. Get that completed within uh, the next month in September.
Um, does anyone want me, do I need to read the?
Do not need to read the left resolution.
The resolution is in the packet. Um. Again, good news.
No.
Getting something paid back early. Any questions, trustee Johnson?
Yeah, I just thought that there was a maturity date of April first, twenty twenty six, so they are. They will in advance of it.
Correct.
Mentioned that, uh, pay us back early, that means they also saved a lot.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's a yes. I, I think there's a incentive for them to be able to pay this off with. Um, you know, with them upon construction and I think with them, you know, borrowing for other projects and that to be able to pay this back, there's a, another incentive for them too. So. There's multiple reasons why it's good for them to do this now. Yeah.
Other questions?
No.
If not, we need a motion.
Um, motion. I move we approve Resolution twenty four dash eleven. A regulation operating the redemption of the taxable note anticipation. Dated November first, twenty twenty.
Is there a second? It's been moved by trustee Woods and seconded by trustee Thompson. Who approved Resolution twenty four eleven. Resolution operating redemption of the taxable note anticipation note stated November one, twenty twenty three, we do need to be rolling on all. Trustee Booker, uh, trustee Woods.
Uh.
Trustee Owens.
All right.
Trustee Johnson, uh, trustee Thompson. That Montgomery, uh, resolution is adopted. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is we need a motion to recess and propose session pursuant to what's happening fact. Nineteen point eighty five one E for the following reasons. For the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties. The investing of public funds or conductings specified public business. Whenever competitive or bargaining required closed session.
True.
And this is related to T F five development. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I second it.
Been moved by trustee Thompson, the second by trustee. Uh, Booker to go into closed session. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Let's have a motion here, we are going into closed. The village board is coming back into open session. It is eight o'clock PM. There is no further action. So I move adjournment at eight PM. All those in favor?
All right.
Isn't it?